Let's call this, we'd like to call this meeting to order. Annie, do we need a roll call? Turn some time over to you for that.
Sure, that sounds perfect. Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Savage is excused. Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker? Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Eric?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Not that we needed to decide on anything today, so I guess that really probably isn't necessary, but formalities. If we could, let's start, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice Mayor, would you lead us in that, please?
Please stand and place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess I should have announced, this is a special work session of the Kingman City Council held at 2:00 PM on Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. So moving on to our agenda, we have two items, one and two, right now because of, actually, we're waiting for Councilor Walker to get here, because at his request. Do we want to go ahead and go into E-session? And he can catch up with us there?
Yes, and he said he was gonna have to leave once he got here. He was not gonna be here for the entire session because he has another meeting right at 3:00.
Okay.
So, but I had told him we were gonna go into the E-session first, and he was fine with that.
Thank you, Manager Miller, I appreciate that. So, item number two, then, executive session regarding Central Square software. The city attorney requests that council go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss and provide legal advice regarding Central Square software contract. Can we have a motion then to go into executive session?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I don't hear any. Let's go to executive session. has informed us of some more information about Central Square software, and it's an ongoing discussion that we will cover again at a later date. Agenda item one, development-related follow-up items. On December 12th, 2023, a work session will be held for the purpose, I guess is what we're talking about, of staff reporting back to the city council on a variety of development-related topics that the city council directed staff to address. The following topics will be addressed at this work session. Arizona revised statute according final subdivision plans, early permitting process, intended purposes and respective roles of the Board of Appeals and Board of Adjustments, discussion of state law enabling administrative reviews and approvals of plans and other building processes, and finally, electronic plan submittals. Let's turn some time over to Manager Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council. So, before you, as the mayor outlined, our variety of topics, I believe that these came up at a end-of-the-council meeting a few months back, probably four or more months ago, and they were the result of some of those development-related meetings that were held with builders and developers in town. And I believe Councilmember Staley had asked for this information to be reported and shared back with the council at a later date. So, that's what we're here to do tonight. And so, we have, as part of our team tonight to help with that, we have our city attorney who will be covering a couple of the items on here, and then also our community development manager will also have a large part of this. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Carl, who's gonna go over the first bullet point.
Sure. Couple slides in. We're gonna just briefly go over Arizona revised statute 9-835, which is the licensing timeframes. I think there's some confusion out there about what it is, how it applies. I'm just gonna kind of go over the legal aspects, not gonna go too deep into the statute itself. There's a bit of text that just kind of gets a little redundant. If there's questions about how it works and how it applies, probably gonna have Sean or Phil, because they're the ones that do licensing and they know that process better than I do. So, the next slide. So, what it just talks about is the city is gonna have to have an overall timeframe to either, go back, thank you, and it was to grant or deny the types of licenses that are, that fall under this purview. And you have an administrative completeness timeframe and a substantive review timeframe. So, when they talk about the license, it's up there, I'm not gonna read all of these, but these are the various, this is the various language regarding the license. Next. It lists some exemptions, and this is kind of where we've run into some confusion. The first exemption, obviously, is these more short-term type of licenses or permits. The second one, it talks about residential lot, because I think there's some folks out there that think this timeframe statute applies to residential development. It does not. It explicitly excludes it. So, it excludes the residential lot, the subdivisions, or the master plan communities. Next. Now, that doesn't mean we can't have a timeframe, it just means the statute isn't controlling. This is the definition of a master plan community. Again, I think you guys all can read that, you know what that means, but again, it talks about some residential, and as a master plan community, obviously, it's more than just residential. But I think a lot of those timeframes, because it's so complicated, it makes it difficult to establish some hard and fast rules on completion. Next. Subdivision is pretty self-explanatory, even though the state legislature took a lot of time to explain it, but I think we all pretty much know what it is. And again, if I'm going too fast, ask some questions. Next. This is the part where, when we're establishing those timeframes, these are the criteria that we need to use to make those determinations, and I just put them up there because I wanted to make sure everybody knows that there's a lot involved in those timeframes. Sometimes you may wonder, why does it take so long, or why is this one longer or shorter than the other? It's all these factors that the city needs to take into consideration when they're setting those timeframes up. The next one is just the continuation of those criteria. All right. So, part of the process is when those permits, applications, or whatever are submitted, the city needs to issue, as I say, written or electronic notice of completeness or deficiencies in the administrative aspect. So, the administrative timeframe is when they submit their application, that paperwork is complete. All the information that is needed to review and process that application is there. So, there's that administrative process. So, if something's missing, we can notify the applicant that that data is missing and give them their time to make those corrections. There's an aspect of, if they fail to respond to any of this, any of this information that we notify the applicant, the city may withdraw that application after 15 days, or a date, or a number of time, or the time period as determined by the city. Next. So, the substantive review is basically the same thing as the administrative. It's making sure we have all the information, well, we already have all the information. This is where they go through and make a determination of, do these comply with our current rules, regulations, and standards? So, if there's deficiencies, we are able to submit one comprehensive list of deficiencies per reviewing department. So, it doesn't have to be one, one list of deficiencies, it'll be, each department gets to list those deficiencies. If there's any changes that need to make, obviously, you can see that this can impact the timing of the substantive review process, and there could be some time added based on that process. If, during that process, and I'm trying to think if it's this slide or the next slide, if we send back a list of deficiencies, they respond back with their corrections, we can say, okay, those corrections may or may not have a deficiency, and we can submit, again, another review that you have to correct those deficiencies. So, as it says, whenever we're doing that, if we issue a notice, that timeframe is suspended. The application can be withdrawn if the city makes that determination after 30 days, if they do not supply the corrections or why that information hasn't been provided. And then, obviously, the review time can be extended by 50%. And as it notes, the city must approve or deny the application within the overall timeframe. So, that's where things kind of come into play a little bit, when you have a 90-day timeframe to review something, a hard, fast 90 days, we either have to review, we either have to approve it or deny it within that 90 days. But that day can be a little bit flexible depending on how the processes are working between the interaction between the applicant and the city. So, as it notes, if that is not granted or denied within the timeframe or agreed upon extensions, the applicant has refunded all their fees that they were charged, and we have to refund within 30 days, the applicant cannot waive it, and the municipality still needs to continue reviewing that application, and it's basically free of charge. Next. So, if the application's been denied, it goes back out, and then, as it notes, the revisions or the corrections of the original application, municipality can't assess any fees that exceed the cost of processing those revisions. If the application was withdrawn because of inaction by the applicant, and the city says it's been withdrawn, if we set those standards and do that, then the municipality can assess up to 50% of the original fee. That may be everything that I've got. So, I know it's a really high overview, and a lot of that makes more sense when you put it in the context of how it's being processed, but if there's any questions about that processing or what I've said, you can ask me, Phil, Sean.
I do have a question. Okay, so, just to sort of simplify this, this is currently the standard for Okay, so just to sort of simplify this, this is currently the standard for commercial projects, right? Because you talked about it, it's not for a residential lot, it's not for a subdivision, but it, we could, we could talk about this just today in the sense of like a commercial project, correct?
Right, it's going to apply to...
So it applies, it currently applies to any commercial projects that are delivered to the city for approval.
That fit the definitions in here, with not the exemptions, correct?
So there's been some talk about that we are not meeting those timelines, and that we're also not then giving back those permit fees when we don't meet them, and in fact, and I'm getting ready to ask you if that's true or not, and I've also been told that we're even charging more because then that permit lapses, it's been out too long, and so we charge them to resubmit the application when a, when a commercial project has gone on for a very long time in the review process. Have you seen that happen?
So essentially, when, the way our fees and our fee structure is written, so we, we follow this as the statute states, except for the fact that we do not withdraw the application, right? So if we started counting those timeframes and they don't get something back to us within thirty days, which oftentimes is the case, then we are supposed to effectively withdraw that application, right? And then they can come back, and at that time, we can charge them an additional fifty percent as per what the statute. However, if it's still within the, if it's still within the first submitted review and/or the second submitted review, which is allowed under our fee structure, we charge them no additional fees or anything else. The only time that we charge additional fees, our fee structure then goes from that standard percentage of the review fee, it goes to an hourly rate of the time that it takes us to do that, right? So the way that the fee structure is written, that it can be the burden rate, most times we just charge the, we have a flat rate of, I don't remember what it is, but we'll just charge them, okay, so if this plan comes in and it takes us two hours to review it or three hours to review it, we charge them hourly beyond that second review. So you get the first review, the second review is a part of the original fee, anything after that, we then charge an hourly rate for the time that it takes us and the time that we're in crude to do so.
Okay. I'm glad you brought up that second review, that was the second part of my question. So as you stated, it's, they get one review, and then, one review per department. So if they're on a second, third, or fourth review, isn't that outside of this law?
So, so the way the, the way the law reads is, at that point, when we get to that maximum timeframe that we've set, we are either to approve or deny. So in the case that it's not in compliance with what our code is, we're going to deny it, right? Per, per what the statute says, we're going to deny that. And then at that point, they have to start the process over again, at fifty percent of the original fees that they paid for that, right? We're not, we're not charging those extra fees, we're not denying the application, we're just continuing to move forward in the process.
Okay.
So according to what the statute is, are we, are we following it exactly the way we're supposed to? No, but in this case, it's in the better benefit of the applicant. So if, if, a lot of the discussion between us has been, do we start following this to the T, right? Which it's not going to be a benefit to the applicant.
So yeah, if I can just chime in, so technically, per the statute, if they don't get it after the second review, we're supposed to deny it. That's, that's what the statute asks us to do. We typically will just work with them and try to help them keep moving it along, and so that's probably the aspect that we're not quite following.
And that second review, that would be for things that were on the first review that were not satisfied?
Or if they made other substantive changes to the plans, then we can also comment on those as well.
If they're...
So, so, yeah, so a lot of times when a comment is made, they'll have to change something, and as a result of that change, it created another issue that now is not in compliance with code or ordinance, right? So it's kind of a tricky walk when you do that, but we try not to introduce anything new unless it's a result of something that they've resubmitted.
Okay. I see you have a question, go ahead.
That was going to be my question. So in your review process, they, it comes back, you make your comments, it goes out, it comes back to you guys. In your, in your next review, are you typically finding things? Because I'm hearing that there are additional things that either get overlooked, it's not due to a substantive, substantive change that there's more comments, there are comments that just appear on the second review. So what has been your experience with that?
Or in other words, you catch something new that you missed the first, in the first review, that's been one of the complaints, right?
So my, in my experience, we, there has been a handful of times where we've found something that just got missed, right? And if it's big enough, we'll say something about it. I would say that's rare. Now, I would say maybe the developers view it differently than us, but I can certainly run through a bunch of scenarios where, you know, they made a change, but they didn't think it was a change. So that's maybe a little bit of a difference of opinion, but in the most case, we try really hard to not introduce something new unless it's really significant and it's a big deal, then we have to say something.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Manager.
You know, the Vice Mayor brings up a really good point, and in my experience in this in other cities, is you'll see that sometimes there's not a coordination between the subs, that you'll see one sub actually makes a correction that affects maybe structural or affects drainage or something, and they didn't talk to one another. So all of a sudden, we pick up something that because of the change on, you know, like a drainage, or maybe it's structural that they did, it ends up affecting what the other sub should have submitted and didn't, so they weren't talking to one another. And that's probably what I've seen in the past, has been more common, when staff ends up having to mark up or submit plans, and a lot of times in the one case I was dealing with, it was such a complicated project, but the, the town staff were getting blamed for that when it was really, the subs on the same project just weren't talking to one another, coordinating.
And if I can just chime in, for commercial projects, we see that a lot, where the civil will show one thing, and the architect would be showing something different. And so one will make an update, but the others aren't making the same update. And so it, in some cases, it's probably not that big of a deal, we won't say anything, but if it's, if it's, if it's important and, you know, that they both need to match, then we will make that, that comment.
Okay. And then to Counselor Staley's point about the timelines, when, when you have it go out, you've done your reviews, it's, it's gone out and it's sitting with the contractor, do you, what's, what's the process for follow-up if it sits too long, if it's, is there, is there a process, or we, the ball's in your court and it's up to you?
At this point right now, how we're handling that is the ball's in your court and you're handling it. When it comes back to us, we'll pick up where we left off and continue on.
And are you logging that, picking back up where you left off?
Correct, yeah.
You guys are logging that, so you could, I mean, you could have a project that you've done the review and in the amount of time that we're supposed to be doing the review, it goes out to the contractor, it sits for forty-five, sixty days, when it comes back to you, I mean, technically, we're just out, we're out that time, but it's not due to what's happening at the city. So are you, you are logging that and tracking that currently?
Everything is, everything, in and out, from anything that comes in, anything that goes out to the contractor or whoever's submitting it, yes, all that, all that time is, is logged.
Okay. And then if it sits out too long and it comes back to you, is there a time where you, you feel it's been out too long and now you have to refresh?
So the, we kind of fall, we kind of fall back on other parameters that are in place. So when you submit for a building permit, right, and let's say there's, there's no action on the applicant's behalf, that application expires in a hundred and eighty days. So if it's out there with them for a hundred and eighty days, we have, we have to look at it and say, okay, if we were to start this process back up again, have codes changed? Have, has this changed? Is there going to, is there going to be anything significant within this project that we need to be updated, right? Most times, I could say there's actually only been two projects that I haven't extended, and that's because when they started their process, we were in the previous code sections, like they're in their 2012 building code, and we would have continued to move that forward because it was in the process, but because they allowed it to expire, no, we're starting all over again because there's some pretty significant changes within the two different codes that, that affect the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I just want to give a quick reminder, make sure you speak loudly and clearly into the mic so that the people on Zoom can hear you.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
So one of the things I was hoping for the council to discuss today is possibly adopting some timeline standards for subdivisions, for residential, for commercial, that would help to hold the city to a certain standard and give expectations and, and make us competitive with our neighboring cities. Now, I understand that today is not a great day to set timelines for everything as we're sort of trying to put this new department together, but what I'd like to look at is in six, or six months, eight months, at some point that, that everyone feels comfortable with, could we adopt this ARS to apply to all of our projects and say, we are committed on our end to getting these through in a timeline that's competitive with Bullhead and Lake Havasu and, and the other cities, the county, and, and just, because I understand that ARS is not, this, this particular law does not apply to subdivisions, but I know there are other cities that still, they want to apply those timelines in order to sort of guarantee and give that expectation. So I wanted to have that conversation today about doing that.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
So what you're suggesting is we already have that in place, so we already have, we've already done that, right?
Well, we have the timelines, but we do not have this default where if we do not come through on those dates, we will reimburse their fees. I mean, there should be some, some kind of incentive for the city to meet the timelines we put out, you know, there's, there's got to be something there that says, we fail to do this, we will remedy it by returning your fees. And it's, to me, kind of what I want to talk about in some of these is how are we going to set some new policies that will ensure that ten years, twenty years down the road, we're still trying to be open for business, as Keith says, competitive, and we're, we're meeting these expectations so that we can be competitive with, with neighboring cities? I hate hearing from people, well, we're just building in Bullhead because it's easier, or they do it better, or whatever. I, I never want to be there. So how do we put some things in place now or in the near future that kind of ensure down the road, we will always perform at this level?
Mayor, Mayor, Council, if I may, I'd like to just jump in on that. I think that's a good idea for us. I'm not sure today we're really ready for that, but you were talking about maybe six, eight months when we would be once we have the department in place, and hopefully we've got things moving a lot more smoothly in development services. I definitely think that that's something for us to take a look at. I was just whispering to Carl, because there might be some issues, if it's not specifically enabled under state law, there might be some gift clause, things that come into play if, if fees are being given back, or, you know. So it's not to say it couldn't be done, and I think we should look at those as potential standards, because I think that would help with the reputation and turning around our reputation. And so definitely, if not the fee aspect of it, definitely having standards set so that everybody knows what those are. And I believe when we had Mr. Schmeling here, I think, isn't, aren't we ninety-five days on, or was that building, or is that subdivision Platts?
Subdivision.
Most of, all the other ones, what we saw were either ninety, or in the case of like Havasu CDA, I believe was forty-five days, because they're a master plan and a lot easier to do. So I think that's, thank you for that suggestion, and I think, I wrote the note down, so we can certainly keep it on the radar. So thank you.
Okay. Can I ask that we bring this back to a council meeting and say, three months with your answers and how we're going to, how we're going to structure this?
I think for sure to bring it back in three months with the research that we did on this, and then maybe you can provide guidance and then come back after that with whatever it takes to implement.
Mayor, I had a question too.
Yes.
Counselor. Just hypothetically, if all of the staff positions were filled and you had a full office, would we still be having timeline issues?
If we were fully staffed, I think we'd be doing a lot better, a whole lot better. I think it's just been a challenge. So we're obviously looking at other options as well, like outside help and whatnot, but having a full staff in-house on the ground here certainly will make a big difference.
And what...
And I was just going to dovetail onto your, Councilmember, your, your comment. And just working with the staff too, we've, we've identified maybe even streamlining things a little bit where the very easy mom and pop things, that might be a garden shed or something that is going to be easier, that those can be kind of go down a different path, and that those can be either done right at the counter or very quickly and not get tied in the queue with all the other complicated things. So we've, we've looked at that, and, and some of the things we're, we're going to be probably doing is asking for, in addition to what you'll be seeing next week with proposed reorganization of the department, you'll likely see some additional resources, to your point about, you know, additional staffing, because I do think that is part of the, the situation we've had for the last couple of years.
So I was, you almost nailed it on the head, I was going to ask if there was a way that we could find a way to make the process easier, more streamlined, to eliminate a few of the positions we don't have currently, but also, you know, diversify between or separate the small projects from the big projects, that's all.
This is kind of one of the reasons why I want to put these in place, let's say, ten years from now, you have a city manager who decides they want to slash the budgets and not fill these roles. If you are reimbursing all of these fees all the time because you're so short-staffed, you're not, it's not working, and you're not meeting these timelines, then that, that forces those positions to be filled, that department to work, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a red flag right away if you're just constantly reimbursing fees. So I'm, that's what I'm looking for, is how do we put some things in place that will ensure that we're, we're keeping those seats filled, we're growing that department with demand, we're, we're, we're holding ourselves to a higher standard so that we don't get in trouble again and, and not meet expectations.
Well, and I, I would just like to chime in, I, I support that as well, for the simple reason that if we have projects that are sitting and costing our contractors money for materials and, and all sorts of delays, you know, we, we should be accountable, because there's some big money out there that they're having to put back into their projects moreover than what they expected and anticipated just because of the delays alone.
You're right, and especially on the financing, the carrying costs of, of just sitting and paying for loans that they're not getting any benefit from.
Absolutely. So we, we need to show that commitment, that, that we're willing to, to hear them on that. And then I had a question on the third-party usage of our review and, and those folks that we're using on contract, are we still utilizing them at a high percentage? And are we getting, are we getting caught up? Are we, we're using them, are we going to anticipate using them less in the future? Or are we utilizing them to their fullest?
Yes and no, and yes and no, and, no, just kidding. So I can tell from, from our, my division aspect, we have those measures in place, and when we do start getting backed up, which with a lot of discussion I've had with Mike Rodriguez, our new, new director, is how, how can we make this more consistent, right? How can we make this to where we're not having to, all of a sudden in a rush, send stuff out and, and get it back? So, we, we've had some discussion with city, with the interim, interim city manager as well. I think with, with some of the stuff that's coming forward, it's, it's gonna make a huge difference in, in that process and using them and/or how we're gonna use them, using them to the best of our, best of our ability.
All right.
So, I, I think we'll see, we'll see, we'll still see use of them. However, I think we'll be able to handle a lot more things in-house and have a better grasp of where we are on these projects, if that makes sense?
It does. I just, to Michael, I, I just, I don't, I don't want that department to be afraid of utilizing those third-party resources. Because I don't think that we were using them as, as often as we should have. And we let ourselves get a little bit more backed up than we should have. And so, I, I, I have heard council say over and over again, we, we need to get these projects through into the finish line, utilize those third parties.
And, and I think that's what we're gonna probably wind up seeing here in the very near future is we're probably gonna see an uptick in the use of the outside consultants, just so that we can get caught up on the backlog. Additionally, as, as Grady alluded to, that we're, we're gonna look at ways to be able to streamline some of our in-house processes so that we can take care of some of these minor projects that are, are kind of stagnating the queue, so that we can get those out of the, in and out as quickly as possible. And that way, staff has the opportunity to be able to concentrate on the projects they should be spending more time on. But yeah, I, I, I believe that it's imperative that we start utilizing the outside plan, plan review process as much as we can to take care of this backlog, get us up to speed, establish some reasonable timelines that we can get the, the development community on board with. And we're gonna, we're gonna be meeting with them in the near future as well so we can talk about some of these things with the stakeholders and talk about how we can collectively help improve the things that we're doing here.
Perfect. I, I like how you're going with that, and welcome aboard.
Phil, got a question. We've been using multiple third-party, haven't we, up till now? And trying, but I know you even had a problem, you mentioned too, that we had a problem with one of them. You had to probably get others involved.
On our end, we're, we're, we're still using the one, but it's gotten a lot better. And on our side, we actually use, utilize them on almost every review. But I would also say on our side, I think we're, we're pretty caught up. And so, so they, they've been helping and, and things are, are going a lot better timeline-wise for us, at least.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a quick question, just out of curiosity. If, if I was to submit a review and you said, okay, I'm gonna get this out as fast as possible, how long would it take if someone was to just put their, turn on the midnight oil and just go at it?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk like Carl and say, it depends. It, it depends on the project, right? If it's a commercial project or something like that, then we can get those turned around fairly quick if we have the staffing for it. Subdivisions and the more complex projects still take quite a bit of effort. So it, it takes a little bit of time. I mean, like, I mean, you have to look at it in terms of, we have projects in the queue and everything, but it might take a, someone one to two days looking at it to get everything put together. But, but again, you still gotta realize that there's, there's a lot of projects in the queue. And just because it might take someone one to two days to look at something, it's gonna take us longer just to get it through the system as, as we're just constantly reviewing things.
Just a reminder, please use your microphone.
Sorry.
And actually, Counsel Eric, if you could move that microphone a little bit closer to you too. Thank you.
Yeah. So if there was no queue?
Like I said, on, on our end, it, it, it depends. It depends on the level of complexity of the project. If there's, you know, issues like, say drainage or something like that, it just, it, every project's different. And it depends.
That's, it's very difficult to put a timeframe on that. You know, in an ideal world, yes, one to two days, right? But most times, we're not dealing with the most ideal things. You know, there's stuff that, that comes in that people miss things, just like we miss things. You know, we talked about having to come back and seeing something again. Oh, shoot, this is, this is something that's, that's pretty important, right? So, it, it's, it's very difficult because they vary, right? And unlike a, a commercial project, you know, usually we can send it out to our third-party. And again, depending upon the complexity of it, everything else, we usually have it back from them within a week to a week and a half. So, again, if we have the staffing, there's no queue, everything else, right? All those things play, play big factors into it, right? Because there's, there's some things that occur on the building side that have to be corrected before the engineers can look at something and make a determination on something. So it, it really, there, it's very difficult to put that, okay, so this is gonna come in and we're gonna have it back out to you in three days, right? It's, it's just difficult to do that. And we'd kind of probably be jumping into a never-ending hole if we were, if we were to do that.
Another example, so you could have a, a project that is gonna just, on a parcel, could just have, generate a lot of traffic, you know, coming and going, the ingress egress. And then also, you know, are there gonna be some public improvements? Do they need a deceleration lane? Those are those inset lanes that allow them, people to turn into it? Or is there gonna need to be maybe a, some sort of traffic control or something like that? Or maybe there needs to be a cut in the median in the center of the road that allows? So, so a lot of the times, it's, it depends on the type of development, as you're hearing. But there's some complexities that actually cause more time to be involved in reviewing. Because we're the ones often that have to make suggestions on the traffic improvements that might have to be included, that they may have left out. And it's that, it's usually that back and forth that sometimes takes the time. Because then they have to get their, their subs, their, their engineers or planners or architects to go make those improvements or those design changes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I have one comment.
Yes, Counsel Walker.
This is going back to, somebody not responding to maybe an email saying, we've kicked this back to you. If you don't hear from them and you're sending the second email, maybe it's time to pick up the phone and call them. I, I've been on my office about this for years now. You know, we've gotten lazy with the internet. I sent an email. Well, they didn't respond. Well, maybe it got buried, maybe it went to spam, maybe it just got lost out there. But pick up the phone. You know, I don't know if that's, you know, my, my private business, I, I'm on my people all the time. If you haven't heard back, pick up the phone.
I, I think that's what I would just consider, that's a standard protocol for good customer service. So, thank you. And I, I, I don't know if that's happening. I would suspect because they've been snowed, it probably isn't happening quite as often as, as we would like. So thank you. I think that's a good observation.
Okay. Moving forward. Where are we at? Next current policy, new single-family subdivisions? Is that where we're at?
I think we're on the revised early permit process.
Right, revert, right, right. That's, yes.
So.
We're a little bit out of order than what we have here, and we realized that right as we got here, so.
Okay.
Anyways, that, I'll, I'll tackle that one. About, I guess it was January of last year, we had some conversation with the council about the subdivision process. And one of those topics was an early permit process. And, and then after that meeting, we came back, I think it was in August, and presented a policy that we had developed. And at the time, everybody seemed okay. And then, since then, there's been some discussion about maybe looking at that and making some revisions. So, what I, what I would like to do is just kind of go through real quick what the current policy is. And so, for single-family building permits within subdivisions, so it's important to know that this is only for single-family permits and it's within new subdivisions that have some type of assurance agreement. We, we can start looking at some type of early permit when the following items have, have occurred. So up there on the screen, you'll see that we'll, we'll ask for an agreement that needs to be signed between the city and the developer. Final plaque's been recorded. All of the subdivision grading is complete. The drainage facilities are also complete in accordance with the plans that have been approved. Property pins have been set. There's an exception there for the front pins. All water mains have been installed in accordance with approved plans. And then, next slide, all fire hydrants have been tested and meet minimum requirements. Same on the sewer side, they've been installed and tested. And then, we need to finish out for the water and sewer process, the as-built process, and actually accept the water and sewer system into our maintenance system. And then, the last item there is, we want to make sure all the street, street improvements are complete, with the exception of the water, or sorry, sidewalk and minor punch list items, and that the street acceptance testing requirements have been met. So, we're wanting all those things to, to, to be done before we start issuing building permits. And so, the, the policy is if, if they've been able to do all of those things, they, they will be able to obtain a building permit, but they'll be limited to, to foundation only. No vertical work would be allowed until they finish everything in, in terms of the required infrastructure. And that all the financial assurances have been released by council. At that point, we would allow them to start going vertical with construction. So, that's the current policy. So, we, we, we went back and looked to see if there, if there were any other things that we could do to help with this process. And so, the proposal that we have this afternoon is that, and, and, and we went round and round, and we, we still think that all the existing requirements for completing infrastructure need to remain the same. The, the building permits may be issued without the foundation-only restriction. So, what that means is, at that point, we've accepted water and sewer and everything. And so, there'll be fire protection on site. And, and so, we've felt that people could start going vertical even though they haven't finished their street improvements and everything, you know, the punch list items and, and whatnot. So I, I think that's probably one of the bigger things that, that we're changing is we're allowing them to go vertical. But with that, we don't want them to get too far down the road until all, all of the, the stuff is complete. So we're just recommending that we limit the number of permits that are issued to about 20% of the overall lots within the subdivision. And then, our, our item of ensuring everything gets done is that we would hold the certificate of occupancy until they finish the subdivision improvements and accepted. And the final, the assurances have been released by council. So, basically, like I said, I think the big change is we're allowing them to go vertical, or we're proposing to allow them to go vertical, limited to 20% of the overall lots within that subdivision. And, and then, the, the difference would then be, we're holding the CO until they finish the infrastructure.
Any questions?
I have some.
Yeah, go ahead. You know, being a work session, I don't think we need to be so formal either. I really, it's a work session. It's informal. So if you have questions, just, yeah.
Ask away.
Ask away.
Okay, so, infrastructure, you're talking about the sewer, the water has to be complete, and the streets have to be in, and the sidewalks have, no sidewalks.
No sidewalks. That, that would be at the time of the building permit.
At the time of the building permit being issued, they would have to have the sidewalks?
So they would need to, before we give them a CO, construct the sidewalk improvements?
Okay. So it's before the CO is issued? Okay. So, I'm just trying to figure out what is speeding up? I mean, what, what's the speeding up of the process?
So, it probably doesn't affect too much in terms of speeding up the process. But what it does is it allows for more work to occur on the developer's side as they're working through some of the, if there's any issues that need to be worked through to, to get everything completed.
So.
Right. They're, they're allowed to go vertical.
Right.
Okay. So that's the time saver really, is just them going vertical. Because, I mean, if you're gonna go in and put the infrastructure into a subdivision, which is what we're saying needs to happen, with the exception of the sidewalks, then you can pull many permits and you can just, you can just bang them out one right after another, after another, after another, right? So.
They, they could get a lot of permits, and if there's something holding it up, they can continue instead of having to pause at the foundation. So that, that's where the savings would.
So what would hold them up at the foundation? What, what would be the pause you, you speak of?
Under the, the new proposal, nothing, so.
Right. But what, what currently is it? I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to process, like, what, what's speeding up this process? Yeah.
So, in terms of, with the current policy, they would not be able to go any farther. They wouldn't be able to go vertical until the, everything's done and it goes to council for acceptance and release of assurances.
Okay. So council does not have to release the assurances for them to construct? It would, for them to be issued the CO, then, then council would have to release the assurance?
Correct.
Which means basically the sidewalks are in?
Well, the.
I mean, everything else has been, everything else has been done, correct?
The, the assurances have quite a bit of implication. Like the, the developer won't be able to actually sell lots, physically transfer the, the title over to someone until assurances are complete. At least that's the, the, most developers, that's the assurance method that they're using. But if there was like a, some other type of assurance. So that's, that, that's a big deal in, in terms of getting that, that released.
And they can't transfer unless they get a CO anyways, so, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So they kind of, they kind of work hand in hand.
Correct.
I'm, I'm just trying to get the developers the benefit of the doubt. And let's, let's really give as much as we can give to speed this up. And I, I feel like this is a good, a good start.
If I can just jump in, I think this is huge. This is a big deal. Some communities will stick to their guns and not offer what we're doing here. This is not quite at-risk, but it's almost like at-risk. So we're letting, there, there's some trust obviously involved in this. Obviously, the developers provided the financial assurances. So if, if they, let's say they went belly up and they weren't able to complete the public improvements.
Well, that's the risk right there, correct?
It is, but they're giving us the financial assurances. So, you know, we could liquidate a bond or go through that or a letter of credit. But what Phil was kind of downplaying, and I don't think he was purposely trying to do this, is that trying to get things scheduled to go on a council meeting and all that, that's all time to get things from the time that, it could be sometimes, you know, three weeks, four weeks. So it is a time saver. And I think it's something that really helps benefit the development community.
Okay. What have you heard from the stakeholders in your discussions?
So we have had some conversation and they seem okay with it.
Okay. With, as proposed?
As proposed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, one of the things you have here on the current policy is that all as-built plans have to be submitted and approved before they can go forward. And isn't that at the, sort of towards the end of the process? So, if, if that's the case, then they don't really have a lot of time to get a jumpstart on the project, because that sort of happens at the end. Is that correct? And so, are you proposing to get rid of that piece?
I'm not, because we're, we're not allowed to do that.
So then, really, then this early permitting process isn't very early? It's just like a couple of weeks head start?
It would be a few weeks, right? And then, and then again, allows them to work out any of the final improvements or the final punch list items and other things at, at the end. But we, we cannot put. But, we cannot put a water sewer line in service, it's state code, right, until we've done all those things that I listed, the as-bills, and we issue a certificate of completion or a discharge authorization. That's a hard and fast rule from the state. That's something we cannot give on.
So, you can't, let's, I need more information. So, you cannot move forward with anything, like the foundation, plumbing?
So, you could, but then, the issue becomes bringing combustibles on site, right? So, you need to have an active water system with fire hydrants and everything before you can really get too far into your construction process. So, in order to do that, we need to have an active water system that has gone through the regulatory process of being approved and put into service.
So, we could allow them to do everything up to bringing in those combustibles prior to the as-bills being approved?
Yeah, that's kind of goes back to the foundation-only type thing, but yeah, maybe.
Well, I just wonder, I mean, I wonder if maybe we could ask Travon for his opinion, since he's here, what is better? To get it, to get those foundations in and everything prior to the combustibles, or do they want to start going vertical, but that means that they only have a couple of weeks? Do you, Mayor, do you mind?
No, it's, council, is that all, actually, per what we talked about, is all right? Yep, if you wanted to come up?
We did work with staff on this, and so, I want to give Phil credit. And I believe that this, what they've drafted clearly meets the ARS statute, right? As-bills and water lines need to be accepted before we got, anybody has access to the water. So, I agree with that. And I, for a second, let's just dream a little, right? Like, I've been to other communities where you'll drive through and you'll see subdivisions being built, and while the subdivisions are being built, there's also houses being built, right? And I'm not, I don't know exactly how that happens, right? But if there was a wish here, what Angle Homes wish is we, while our subdivision is being built, at some reasonable entry point, we had always thought that after the streets are paved, right? At that point, you would have hydrants installed, water services installed, curbs and paving installed. But one of the things that kind of ties our hands is, after paving is done, is that's at the point where we've gathered enough information out there in the field to be able to present our as-bills, right? After paving, we go in there, Friday Construction goes in there and raises the water and sewer concrete collars to street grade. And then, at that point, they send a survey crew out there, and they shoot all the elevations of that, and then that's the last bit of information that's encapsulated in the as-bills, and they're submitted to the city. So, it's, the hard part here is, Phil can't approve the subdivision until he gets as-built. As-bills are like, the subdivision's finished at that point, right? By the time I can get all the information that he needs to approve the water system to make the hydrants live, we're weeks away from a council meeting, right? So, it's, but again, to their credit, I believe that our hands are kind of tied by this ARS statute. But, if there was a way to be able to get access to permits at the point where there's paving on the ground, fire trucks can access the subdivision, that's the ask, right? But, and also respecting the fact that there is an ARS statute that kind of says when a water system can be accessed.
I don't know if that answered any questions or made it worse.
And if I can just chime in, the one thing that we need to just keep in mind is not making this too difficult to track. So, if we start introducing a bunch of intermediate steps, and it just becomes hard for staff or the developer to track, you know, if we do a foundation-only permit, when is everything good for them to keep going with something out? So, just trying to keep it as streamlined and easy to track as possible.
The question was about whether or not it's beneficial for the early permitting process to be foundation-only, to let you do everything up to having those, you know, before the combustibles are delivered? Or is it that you need to have those delivered and start?
The worst scenario would be a scenario where we get access to permits, we're limited to foundation only, and we're building these houses, and all of a sudden, we have to stop construction, right? Because on this backend, Phil has, they haven't approved the as-bills, and so now, we're taking this, these 10 homes that are being built and just putting them on hold. That's probably the worst case, just not good for us. But I think that there's just the tasks stacked at the end, right? When we look at that list of things that looks like a pleasant little list, but there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done right at the very end. So, yeah, I don't know. We'd like to be building houses earlier. I don't know that we can do that and meet the ARS statute. Is there a way to administratively approve that water line sooner than reviewing all of the as-bills?
I'm gonna say no, just because we're required to have those as-bills in hand and approved. That's part of the code, right? And so, I would say, what we've presented is probably the most we're able to do. And I would note that this is, like, as the city manager said, this is a big thing that we're giving, right? Allowing them to go vertical and whatnot, prior to having all of the punch list items or any other items that might be out there still. That's, I think that's a pretty big concession.
If this policy stands, right, I believe this is a good working version of an early permit process. And I would just say, if this is what the will of the council is, is to go with this, I feel like it just puts a further burden on, when we're trying, the importance of those as-built reviews and getting those in a really tight, I mean, there's been instances where those as-built reviews at the end, right, we're wrapping up a subdivision, we've been paved, and now we're waiting for months to get that as-built. That hasn't happened recently, right? But that is one of those risks, is that as-built, at the end of that process, we've been years in this, and we just want to as quick as possible get to that city council meeting and get our release of assurance, so we can go do what builders do, build houses. So, I think it just, if we could, if we accept this, just tighten up that backend policy on what happens at the end when you're fixing a subdivision, finishing a subdivision.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we put a, once the as-bills are back into the city, that we review it? I mean, how long does that normally take now, Phil?
So, we've made some adjustments in our department. My goal is to have as-bills out within two weeks of receipt.
Okay, that sounds fair to me.
And in reality, if the engineer does a good job, it's a really simple review. It's when there's missing information or something like that. That's just when it, you know, starts to take longer than we want. But, that's our target.
Well, Council Walker, I know we appreciate your perspective, because obviously, you're a builder too, and so, you know, you have some expertise in this area.
I'm not a subdivider, so I don't have to battle this. I normally build on infill lots. But I see their pain, you know, because you, you're trying to build these houses as fast as you can, and, you know, the quicker you can go vertical, the better. And I think this is good of the city, what we're doing. I mean, you know, if we didn't have the ARS statute, we could make it easier, but we have to follow those guidelines, because otherwise Carl will slap us. But I think it's a good start, as long as we can make sure when the as-bills do get in, we're turning them back around within two weeks. Hopefully, there's no issues with them, and it gets approved right away.
It sounds like it's a step in the right direction. Well, as Manager Miller said, this is a huge give, to help streamline things.
I have to tell you, having worked in a city that's relatively younger city, there were times when we looked at the as-bills 20 years later, and they didn't match up with what the infrastructure was. So, it's really important to have this review, because when you're trying to do CIP projects, and you're trying to do things that maybe the development community put in sewer lines or other infrastructure, and you're doing that, it costs us more money on our end later on. So, I think this step is very important. And we can see, if there's any other types of improvements, I'm committed to seeing how we can make things run more smoothly. Maybe if that means even just having some, you know, expedited review or something like that, or outside review, to help move this forward quicker. But it is very important to make sure we review those as-bills.
Well, and I would just like to make a suggestion. If, I'm sure it has been looked into, but if there are other areas in the state, other bigger cities or bigger projects where they're able to work around this, or, I mean, I know you did some research when you brought this forth to us with some other cities. I mean, was this a pain point for them, or?
I think you'll see that a lot of other cities just don't issue building permits until the infrastructure's done. I mean, there were some that had a version of what we're presenting, but you'll, I think you would see that there were a lot that were not really allowing anything to go vertical until you get some of this basic infrastructure in.
Okay, any more comments about early permitting process? Okay, intended purposes and respective roles of the Board of Appeals and Board of Adjustments, and of course, Carl, is that you? Sean?
I did not decide that. I would make that very clear.
You drew the short straw, it sounds like.
He was told, all told. Okay, so we'll start with the Board of Appeals. Essentially, what this is, is this is coming from the code side of things, excluding the planning and zoning code, right? So, any other code or ordinance that we have, it all comes down to interpretations. So, this shows what it applies to, that's what this first slide is, and this is right out of our municipal code, so the international fire code, the building code, residential code, plumbing fuel, all those different things. One thing to note is that the Board of Appeals, some of the limitations of their authority, it has to meet the true intent of the code, right? So, they can't, somebody can't just take something to the Board of Appeals and be like, "Yeah, I don't like this, so I need you to change this so that I can do what I want to do," right? That's not, a lot of people think that that's how this works. It's not how it works. And essentially, how you even get to the point of taking something to the Board of Appeals. So, I think the best thing to do would be to jump into the example page that I have here. So, let's say somebody is wanting to do something, and the building official or fire marshal says, "That's not what the code means. That's not, you're not applying it correctly. Nothing is working there," right? The contractor interprets it differently on how we want to do it. Essentially, the, they have the opportunity, contractor obviously always has the opportunity to meet with the fire marshal or the building official to say, "Hey, let's come to an agreement upon this. Let's figure out what we can do." And one of the nice things about the building code is it does allow the building official that authority to do so. So, if you cannot reach an agreement on how you're gonna move forward within, you know, within applying the code and meeting the intent of the code, it's at that point when they are basically advised that they can submit to go to the Board of Appeals. You go to the Board of Appeals, it's discussed, right? And then, basically, whoever's correct in that. Some things that I want to point out about the Board of Appeals, I have been around the city for many, many, many years, and I don't know that we've, in a lot of years, that we've ever had to go to this level of the Board of Appeals. Most times, you sit down, you have a conversation, you kind of explain, "Hey, this is where we're coming from, and this is why it is," right? We also have other things at our disposal to where, basically, it gives, the code gives narratives about every code on why it's there and how it should be applied, right? It's a total separate book, but we have that. We also, through some of the memberships we have, we can submit things like this to the actual International Code Council, who writes these codes, and say, "Hey, how do we need, what is your suggestion on how we apply it?" Right? So, we have some other steps that we can take prior to even going to the Board of Appeals. And most times, it's an agreement, it's come to, and we move forward, and we don't have to go to this length. So, that's just something to keep in mind as far as that goes.
Sean, would you mind pulling your mic a little bit closer? They're having a hard time hearing you online.
But I'm really loud.
Thank you.
And I don't want to hear myself. All right, so essentially, that's pretty much it when it comes to the Board of Appeals. It seems simple, but it can be more complex, but it really is simple. Are there any questions on how that works? No?
The reason why I wanted to talk about the Board of Appeals is because it seems like we should have a public process for when the city and a builder do not agree. They do not see eye to eye on whether it's how the code is being applied, or, you know, another example I had is I've been hearing about this program we have, this Flow 2D program that has to do with water flows and where we need to have more retention basins and that kind of thing. And I understand there's been times where, like, Flow 2D says one thing, city engineers' calculations aren't even quite the same, the builders' calculations aren't quite the same, but we can't come to an agreement. And, not just in this situation, but in other situations, I hear, "Well, the city says one thing, we think it's another, and now we're just, you know, at a stopping point. We don't know how to move forward." And so, I believe there should be some kind of clear process to move forward. It shouldn't come down to, you know, calls the city council, city council pressures, you know, pressures the city manager, "You've gotta hurry up and do something." The Board of Appeals, they're made up of professionals in that field, right? You have usually an engineer, you have somebody that's been a contractor before. I think there's certain positions they all have to fill. So, it seems like, when you can't sit down and have that conversation and find common ground, instead of everybody just walks away, and they're upset, and they don't even know how they're gonna ever move forward with these projects because they don't see eye to eye, there should be a public process to help them move forward in that case. So, that is why I brought up this particular commission. I don't think they've ever met. I believe I was liaison for a couple of years on this one. We never met. So, we're not utilizing them, but we're also having this issue where people don't see eye to eye, and how do we move them forward? How do we find a better process, again, for the next 20 years, where somebody has a clear path to finding a solution that's a safe compromise for the city, for the builder, so that we, they can move their project forward?
So, I think one thing what I'm hearing is the Board of Appeals is primarily for building code, right?
It is.
And you're bringing up other types of code that come into play.
Right. But I believe, Carl, we could change this commission to include more than that, couldn't we?
Well, I'd have to look and see if that's gonna be within, we can look to see if we could address that, because I don't know specifically what you're talking about and how that would come into play with this. But it may be something we might be able to address and look at. And just make, I want you to understand, part of the question, or part of your statement was, they haven't met, and they only meet when there's an appeal.
Right.
And it's a quasi-judicial type of situation. So, they don't just meet to discuss things. So, I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that.
Sure, I guess what I think both Sean and I are saying, they've never met, we're not utilizing this commission. If we're in a, and I have heard about, you know, plenty of times where you just didn't see eye to eye on how this particular thing is supposed to be applied, but we just didn't move it forward. I mean, I remember when we first, when I first got here, there were plenty of issues with a building official that maybe was heavy-handed on some things, and people didn't see eye to eye, but it never went to the appeals board.
I guess I would jump again. I guess I would jump again on that. That's up to the aggrieved party to file an application. It's not a board just to utilize because they exist. It's only when there's an appeal submitted. So if that aggrieved party has a problem, they submit their appeal, we don't get to say no. That's what happens.
But if we don't say, "Okay, we don't see eye to eye. Your next step is to go to the Board of Appeals." If we, if we never talk about that and we never offer that, then that could be another reason why they never met, especially in those days.
I think all the documentation, well, I don't know if all the documentation gives them that notice, but I suspect it does.
So I hear, I completely understand, because I've gotten involved in a few of these situations, so I know exactly what you're saying. What I would suggest is, keep in mind that local government has a regulatory obligation. So, you know, there's going to be sometimes disagreement from the parties that we're trying to regulate. And I'm not trying to say, you know, I'm not like pro-regulations or anything, but one of the things that, under state law, we're a political subdivision of the state and it's, there's expectations that we put on our hat and also our regulators at times. And I know sometimes that comes into conflict with what we're trying to do, particularly, you know, be pro-development and try to encourage development. What I can commit to you, though, is we can see if there's other ways of doing this. Maybe there's a hearing officer approach, but you'd want to make sure that the hearing officer has understanding on, on like, you know, engineering-type matters or things like that, because that's when I, what I seem to see right now are those are primarily those types of issues. So, but I'm just saying, I don't believe a border commission would be really the appropriate process for, I'm almost talking like an ombudsman kind of thing. That could be something that we can look at setting up, but we need to find out how to do that, if that's something the council wants to do, how it would work, what types of issues would be involved. And I would say that the process we have now, if they don't like what the city engineer has, or, you know, if it has to do like drainage, for instance, or the city engineer staff, their calculations are different than the others, and we can't come to some understanding or compromise, then there is an appeal process or some way, and that's what you're talking about, is due process, some sort of way.
Yeah, I'm talking about fair process, so that you don't just come to a standstill and no way forward.
Right.
And while, you know, I just bring up Flow 2D, that's a new one, but like I said, when I first was elected, it was just an inspector that we had that was heavy-handed, and people will tell you some of the demands that that person had, no, that person's no longer here. So it could be anything. Over time, you, you know, and that's the problem with when you have something that's up for interpretation, there should be another process to help the public to sort of move forward on these things, and it shouldn't necessarily be that they have to contact the city council, because not a lot of people will do that. Some people will just give up and they'll walk away. And then we've, they, you know, they didn't fix up that house, or they didn't renovate that, that commercial spot. So we want to have a clear way forward.
We'll look into this further. The one thing to keep in mind as part of, and I'm not, you know, I'm not one that always cries and uses the liability or the sue happy kind of thing, but again, part of our regulatory responsibilities as a city is to protect our interests and protect assets of other entities and other town assets or city assets. So, so a lot of times, there might be a disagreement, but in the end, I think the city should prevail. But I do think we need to look in and see if there's another way of getting another, like an opinion or a process for that. So we'll definitely look into that, because I do know, like, City of Phoenix and some other larger cities have the use of what I call hearing officers, and it's for administrative matters like this. Well, I don't want to say like this, for administrative matters. We'll look into that.
Okay.
Continue on, Sean.
That is all for the Board of Appeals. So then I believe the next would be the Board of Adjustment.
And if I may, on these two boards, there is one more level of appeal on these. And Carl, did you want to kind of explain what the next step is if they fail and they wish to proceed beyond this?
Sure, sure. As I said earlier, it's a quasi-judicial type of a situation. So they actually gather evidence and hold a hearing and make a determination. And if whoever is the losing party can appeal that determination, but that goes to the superior court. So then it really starts going into the legal, the legal court process. Yeah, it doesn't go to council.
Well, it sounds like, it's just basically that, and councilor say, you wrote up something, maybe I would think that they would understand that this is available to them, but it sounds like it's underutilized.
I don't know. I mean, I don't, I think probably. Councilmember Staley, will you please use your microphone?
Dang it!
You can just leave them on. There's not a bunch of background noise, so it'll be okay.
I am so sorry, Annie. You know, like, in the, in the case, when I first got here, it was, it was an entrepreneur trying to fix up a building downtown and incurred a lot of extra costs because of the heavy-handed nature of applying the code. And it wasn't about safety necessarily or protecting people. It was just that that's how that person often did their job. So, so then in that case, you just have an entrepreneur, they don't, they don't know about an appeals process or any of these other, this is all foreign to them. And, and so that's kind of what I'm talking about, again, is a long-term, after we're all gone, you know, and it's all new staff and new city managers and all, you know, that there's just something very clear-cut in place that, that allows people to come to a resolution that's fair or safe, not necessarily giving everybody what they want and then the city's taking these risks, but just a clear, easy process for, you know, these instances where things aren't necessarily interpreted in a fair or just way, or, or you can't come to a, you can't come to a compromise and you need a third party to come in and say, "Hey, no, the city is right," or, "Hey, no, maybe this has gone a little too far." That's, that's what I'm talking about.
So I could jump in real fast, just kind of as a temporary fix and notwithstanding expanding the Board of Appeals role. I think definitely we can have a paragraph or something in documentation that just notes that, you know, if you're, you know, have a problem with whatever decision's being made by the building official or zoning official, these are the appeal steps. And if that's not already there, then we can add that to some paperwork.
Okay.
That's simple.
That's what it sounds like. It's just like an information problem that just needs to be highlighted, that they have that available to them.
If they're not aware of it, we can make sure they're aware.
Right.
Okay.
Again, for clarity, though, that's only for, like, uniform building code interpretation and things. It wouldn't be like drainage studies or, you know, like the engineers' calculations and things like that.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
Of course.
How would that be addressed if we did have, you know, Phil saying, "This is the drainage we see," and the other engineers saying, "No, we see here," and they don't see eye to eye? How are we handling that now, Phil?
Many times, I mean, the drainage is variable, right? But I just want to make it clear that as we go through this, it's, it's not like one-way or the highway, but if there's a major difference, we try to work through it. But, and ultimately, I think, it's incumbent upon the city to either approve or deny it, right? And so that's, that's usually where it ends up. But in a lot of cases, we can work through it and show them, "Here's this, here's this, and here's this. This is why it's showing water going through here." And so I think a lot of times, it's just that maybe the developer doesn't want to move forward with what's needed to be done to remedy the situation.
Do you have flow charts that are established by, is that an engineer we've hired?
Yeah, so like, we're going to talk about Flow 2D. So the, the city hired a consultant. They're, they're very well-respected in the state of Arizona. They're the go-to consultant for many municipalities in Arizona. And they did some modeling that shows where all the flooding is anticipated to occur now. And it's a really good, useful tool. And we're not saying that that is the end-all, be-all. What we're saying is, if, if you're coming up with something that's drastically different, you need to show us, you know, why you think it's wrong, and then we look at it. We've actually had a time or two where we've looked at it and said, "Yeah, we're, we agree. You can probably do this instead." And so there are times where we do look at it and say, "Yep, there's, there's some adjustments that can be done." But if there's a major, major discrepancy, we're going to look at it and we're going to try to figure out what the difference is.
Okay. Appreciate it. Can I beat this horse to death?
Sure.
I just want to jump in on, this is something we definitely need to be careful about. This is something that Phil and I have talked about, is drainage, water flow, litigation. So that's something that happens. We have been sued because of litigation issues of things we've approved or things that have been worked on. So we always want to be careful about our role to protect those folks downstream of wherever this water is going. That's why we need to make sure that the drainage is done right. So I just wanted to throw my two cents in there. Thank you.
So I have a question for Phil. How often is that modeling done?
Well, we've only done it once.
To what date is that?
2016, maybe, I think, is when we did it.
What's the recommendation for the timeline?
So the, unless there's major changes happening in the watershed, you don't really need to do it again. If there's, if there's major changes, then we can redo that. But as we-
What about development? Does development affect that?
But as, as we develop, the whole, the whole mantra is we're not making things worse, right? So in theory, we shouldn't have to remodel it, because as development is coming in, they're, they're addressing and they're accepting water, say, like it's off-site water coming in, they're taking it, routing it through their project, and discharging it in a similar quantity and similar manner, right? And so, in a lot of cases, we may not need to do it. We can. It's, it's a, it's a big undertaking and we can, but we may not need to.
So would you say that 2016 standards are, could be ultra-conservative based off of development that's happening that may be mitigating the flow of the water?
Rephrase that question for me. I want to make sure I understand what you're asking.
Well, I'm just saying, 2016 was a little bit away, you know, in the past. So we've had some development. So do you think that in 2016, the modeling was conservative compared to the development and the ways that we are mitigating the water?
So the, the model was, I think, fairly accurate in how they modeled the, the parameters of how the land use and everything else. So I would say it's a pretty good representation of what we're seeing happening in, throughout the city. And it's interesting, I've looked at stuff and it's like, "Yep, we're having a problem here. The model shows we're having a problem here." I've even gone and done some modeling, a different type of modeling, and compared it to what our consultant did, and I've come up with very similar answers. So I think, you know, what was done was, was really good, and I don't think it, the parameters that were used haven't changed substantially from 2016 to now.
Okay. Because I have been involved in discussions where it seems like we're pretty far off. The developer's pretty far off from the city, and so I wonder if the modeling from 2016 is affecting why we're so far apart.
If I may, I've only become aware of a few items that I got involved in. And some of these are what I would call legacy, you know, subdivisions that existed before the 16 modeling that occurred. And so we're requiring things that weren't required back when those subdivision plats were recorded and/or not recorded, some of them were not recorded. But the point is, we are much more in tune with our drainage needs and what we need to do. And so what I'm trying to get at is, that's what I've seen, is where there's been a disagreement between the builder and the community or the staff on what we're requiring or what the flows are and so forth. So that's part of what I've been seeing. And then back then, if they had just built, they wouldn't have had the same requirements that you need today. So that's, that's part of the challenge, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. But these, these subdivisions you speak of, they were predated before 2016 as well, correct?
Correct.
Right. But I'm saying, as they come forward, some of these builders now are coming forward.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out if the modeling is, is taken into account, or if we are taking into account the development that's happening. And if we are, and we're mitigating the development versus the model that showed us in 2016, because the model didn't necessarily predict all the development.
Right. So what the model did is it just gave us, this is what's happening. It's not looking at development standards, it's not looking at everything else.
And it's not looking at the future either.
Correct. It's just saying, this is what's happening.
Right.
You know, this is the type of soil you have, this is how it's going to run off, and this is where it's going to go. So that's what the model does or gives us.
Okay. All right. I was just curious, how often those studies are done, if it needs to be updated, you know, brought, brought forward, and what, and what a cost of something like that looks like.
It's been a while, but, you know, a citywide model, we would have to go in and update topography for the entire city. So that's, you know, a chunk of change. And then to have someone sit down and prepare the model is another. So it's, it's a big number. I'm not sure, I mean, if I throw something out, I'm probably going to be wrong, but, you know, at least $100, $150,000 to do something like this, to update it, because you're having, like I said, you're having to redo all of your topography and everything as, as part of that.
Okay. Thank you.
So my, just to really beat this horse, you've got Phil who says, you know, if we don't, if we don't agree, you know, we can look at this and we can find common ground, or, you know, that's his, that's his policy. But when Phil leaves and there's a new engineer, maybe that engineer says, "No way, we're only going by what Flow 2D says. We don't care what your calculations are." So my, my whole point of this was not that I want to give away the farm. It was every employee is different and they change. So what is the process for, for somebody to say, "I need, I need to go one step further to find a workable solution because now we have a new engineer and that engineer won't work with us. They only want to do it this way," you know, or an inspector, or maybe it's Sean Osterman who one day says, "Forget you all. I'm going to make this as hard as possible." It's just a process. That's all I'm asking. I'm not trying to point fingers. I'm just trying to say, how do we let people move forward?
I'm guilty now. I do think there are examples of how other cities might handle this. So we'll research this and get back to council.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Is that it for Board of Appeals and Board of Adjustments?
For me, it is.
That horse is gone.
It's so dead.
Sean?
Sean is dead.
There's a little bit more Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
If we can move forward. So it'll go through really quick. A lot of the policy, or all of the policy that is in the Board of Adjustment as far as what can and can't be done, it's the same. It's all mimicked. So the Board of Adjustment has to follow the same procedures as, or, I'm sorry, the Board of Appeals has to follow the same procedures as the Board of, the Board of Adjustment. So in this portion, it kind of lays out what they can and can't do specifically. If there's questions on that, we can answer those, but we'll just move through. Something else I want to point it out, in our actual zoning code, kind of speaking to what you, what you've said, is we have essentially like a flow chart. So if we- like a flow chart. So if we look up on the screen, it tells you, so if this is, if this is what your issue is, so if it's a minor modification to something that you're wanting to make in the zoning code, this is the staff and/or what you, your process is. So like in this case, it would be to, um, the director would make a decision. And then if that wasn't a good decision, according to the person who's appealing it, would then go to the Board of Adjustments and then to this, your Court of Appeals. So I think this is something that we might be able to apply across the code all the way is maybe come up with some flow charts of, hey, if you're having a problem with this particular section of code, whether it be, um, the streets code, the drainage, the drainage plan, or whatever it is, kind of set this up to where there is, um, a map of who to go to. Is that kind of what you're, what you're trying to get at?
A map and a process for finding a resolution.
Okay. All right. It makes sense to me. Uh, but other than that, are there any other questions, um, that any, anybody has in reference to Board of Adjustments or Board of Appeals? I'm, I'm done. I'm done. It's time for the next one.
Uh, discussion of state law enabling administrative reviews and approvals of plans and other building processes.
Didn't we already do that?
Yeah. I don't, or flows a little bit. I had put this, I did there and kind of dropped off. I don't know when it was time to do it. But, uh, the state legislature passed-
Carl, would you mind using your mic, please?
The state legislature passed a, a statute this last legislative session that talked about, um, making things expedite. And I don't know if so many of you remember that process. And one of the things they did is they talked about giving, uh, removing some of the public hearing aspects specifically regarding, um, the, the preliminary plat, the final plat and the amendments to those plats to move it out of, uh, public hearing, out of the council and give it to the staff. Um, it would, I, I don't know how, how much that speeds up the time. I'm assuming it's a substantial amount of time, but it's a process that basically, I think the next council meeting, you guys are going to be looking at some plat or, or something. And that's the process we've always done in the past. And you're going to approve those type of things. This idea is, uh, to, to eliminate the council from that decision. Which would, as Sean was nodding his head, expedite the process substantially.
Absolutely. So just to add a little bit to us in, in our current process, which we're going to go through the subdivision process here shortly. It might be better to talk about it after that. But the, essentially when we get everything wrapped up with a subdivision, whether it's a preliminary plat or everything else, right, depending upon when it is, we then have to take, like, so a preliminary plat has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then it has to go to the council. And then from there, we start the final plat process. And from there, it has, we have to go through the process of everything. Um, and then council has to approve the final plat. And I think what the idea behind this is, once council has already seen the preliminary plat and there's been an approval, right, there, there's not going to be any major change to the final plat. Because if there is, then we're going to come back to council at that point, right?
But you cannot, under this law, you-
You, you could not go back to council.
Well, like working for, for a preliminary plat.
Oh, we don't even have to go to council at all?
No.
Yeah. It's all administrative.
You guys even care? Like, no, I'm just kidding.
Yes.
No, but I mean, it, it's, it's kind of one of those things to where that, that timeframe that it takes for us to get everything wrapped up and then to create the staff report and everything else and get it to council, um, it, it's not just a, okay, it's done. Let's, let's put it on the council agenda. You know, there's, there's more work that has to be done because we've gone through and we've done the review and everything's in compliance. Now we have to get, put together the report of, hey, this is how it's going to affect things. And this is what the possibility could be and, and those, those different types of things. So it, it would be nice if it was just super easy and we could be like, oh, hey, here it is, you know. But unfortunately, that's, that's time that it's taking us as staff to do. And then at that point, we have to get it on the agenda, right? So there's that timeframe, whether it's, you know, two weeks because of all the other stuff we're working on or whatever it is, that we could really, really shorten up that timeframe to where, okay, when it's done and staff says it's done, we're, we're moving on to the next step. We're not having to take or wait these two weeks to get it on the agenda, to get it approved and, and all those things. It, it takes that out of that. Um, Carl, I, I don't, does it, it says we don't have to go for the preliminary plat. Um, I believe preliminary plats, we should still come to council with that. And then after that point, are, are we able to write this or implement this to, to a way? Would we be able to?
Well, I don't know if everybody recalls at the tri-city council meeting.
Yeah.
The league director was here and I can't remember his name. He said he had some model ordinances that the city attorneys had gotten together to work on. This was one of those. Um, and we, you know, when we did our at-risk that we just talked about earlier, that was another aspect that that was talked about. So the model ordinance, we have to tweak it because it doesn't really fit the community quite the same. But we can draft it how the council would like to have it. Uh, it's just a matter, is there, uh, an inclination from the council to be willing to let that be removed from the council approval process?
Well, are we talking about approving a preliminary and not a final? Or we're talking about the council never gets involved in approving a subdivision?
Well, I, it allows for-
So I, I, I think it's, basically makes the entire subdivision process administrative.
Yeah.
There's, there's no public process. Um, so it's, it's an option. It's not required. It, it's, it's up for discussion, um, with, now. But I think it allows for a completely administrative process.
I guess my question is, is does it have to be completely administrative or completely the way that we're doing it now? Cause I think there's some modifications that we could, if, if we're allowed to, the statute allows us to. I think there's some things that we could do. Like for instance, preliminary plat comes, council is looking at that, it's going through that process. But then from that point forward, it's staff and administrative from there unless there's a significant change to that preliminary plat.
And I'd like to see a hybrid of what you're talking about, if it's possible. Because I, I, I'm not in favor of this being completely administrative. I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
So you wanted to put the brakes on that.
But I, I would like to see, I would like to see a hybrid of come forward.
Yeah. Like I said, there's a model ordinance that we can, we can play around with. We can talk with Sean and-
This might be worth coming back at a later date.
Yeah, this was just-
But we wanted to get a sense on how you felt about this.
Correct.
That's just how I feel.
I agree.
Yep.
You know, as you've seen with zoning cases and such, you know, this is very similar. Um, the public likes to really get involved in these and they'll just freak.
They should. They should.
Excuse me? No, and, and I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying they would freak out knowing that this is an administrative process. Um, and it's so different than what they've been used to seeing in the past. So I do think that this is something, maybe not even a hybrid process, just to keep it as a status quo. Um, unless it's, unless it's another, like, let's say it's a, and I don't know how this works under the state law, but there are some subdivision plats that are out there that have previously been approved. And we could maybe write the code that if they haven't been built within a certain time, I think they, they're supposed to like revert back to the previous plans, right?
Yeah, there's, I think we have some restrictions on some of the new-
So what I'm saying is on those that are previously approved, maybe that might be a case in point, to your point about a hybrid, that that just, that had already been approved by council. And then, you know, a builder now has pulled or submitted plans or wishes to do so. And if the staff can go ahead and extend that, that's something I'm just thinking, to your point about a hybrid.
Yes. In that scenario, I, I could support that. Um, but in another, I mean, I, I guess I was looking for the time saver. So I was looking for council to be able to have comment in the public to have their process. But is it, is it better to do it on the front end or the back end that saves you the most time so that you can expeditiously get these through?
I would say on the front end, on the preliminary plat.
So that's, that's where I was going with it. I, I think that's, that's a good best of both worlds solution.
Yeah. Because I know, that's one of the things that we're going to talk about is the process after, after it's through the review and now it's got to go to council and then it's got to go to the county and do all these things like that is taking time. So if you can remove the final approval to take out that one step, that might be good. But I think, I agree, there's got to be a public process and council has to approve it. And then about the, um, these old subdivisions that have already been approved by the city council and now they're going to be built, um, on those, I think that if we're going to make, if staff is going to make changes to those, it should come to council first for permission to change work that we've already done or a previous council's already done. I don't think that staff should be able to undo a council decision, uh, that those need to come back to the city council for approval if we're going to make changes to them.
So in that instance though, to your point, wouldn't that only, I mean, wouldn't the only changes be if we had a subdivision that was approved years ago, we're, we're making them build it to standard of today? Is, would those be the only updates? It wouldn't be anything major?
No. It wouldn't be major.
We, we say it's not major, but some of the work that didn't go into some of these previous subdivisions, sometimes it is major, right? There's-
Right. It's usually drainage, right?
Exactly.
Streets.
Drainage or street widths or things like that. Yeah.
Sure.
And, and I think this particular thing is something that I think Carl's going to come back with. Um, cause there's, particularly on the drainage side, um, there's some implications if, if something were to move forward and they weren't mitigating drainage, that could create a major issue for the city. So-
Sure. I think we saw that a year or two ago.
Yeah. I'm just saying that, that should come back to council as a-
So I, I just-
This was approved by the city council and now we want to unapprove it and we want to make changes. Because the city council, when they approved it, they made it an agreement with that, with that builder that, you know, through that whole process, they give, we give, right? You come to an agreement and it, it's just like any other development agreement. If, if we made it, we, we need to stick by it unless there's something major happening that staff is concerned about and it's, you know, a risk, um, there's some liability, somebody could get hurt, whatever it is. And I think staff needs to come back to the council and say, you did approve this, you made this agreement, but we're asking you to undo it and here's why. And it should be a public process for the council to decide if they want to go back on a previous agreement that's been made.
I can, I could just say that I, I'm pretty confident the staff doesn't want to have this awesome responsibility on them to do this because they just know they're going to get potentially beat up by residents and, or council. Um, and it's really, it's been historically a function that councils are involved in. So I, I, I think it's one that we definitely are not, we're not advocating. We just want to make sure you were aware of this and if you want to provide us direction as to what you'd like to see happen.
Okay.
Yeah. So as Grady's saying, this is a new option. So I, I guess I'm still confused on, should I look at, leave as is?
I, I personally was in favor of, uh, the council approving a preliminary and then letting it be administrative for the final, so long as there weren't any major changes. Uh, that way there's still a, a public process, but it does speed up the end game.
All right. We'll look and see what language we can come up with.
But that was just me. No one else said it.
Yeah. Well, I, I agree.
No, I think that's exactly what I said.
I cherish that. Yeah.
I just, I just-
That's good.
See concurrents. So, thank you.
Do we want to go through all these steps on this, um, the administrative review? Or what are we wanting to do?
No. So, so there's, uh, some labeling errors here. This is the subdivision. Oh, wait, ready? Oh, it's the subdivision process?
Right.
Is this the second one on our steps and timelines? Is that where you're moving to?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So it's, it's up to you what, you're, you're the grand poobah here. So yeah, the, that was Carl's and then the heading is wrong as we move forward. So where it says administrative review and approval of plats, um, that should just say subdivision process.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Um, essentially the, kind of the process for subdivisions, um, it, it kind of follows along a lot of what our, our processes are. Uh, the pre-application meeting, that's where everybody that's going to be involved in it sits down, says, hey, this might be an issue. This might be an issue. This is what the current zoning is. Um, the, these are the things that need to, to maybe be addressed. This, this portion right here is voluntary. It's not something that we, that we require. Majority of, uh, developers like to sit down and have this meeting. Um, but based upon comments and things that are discussed in there, we, we provide them a comment letter saying, hey, these are, this is the stuff that we talked about. Here's the ordinances that we feel might become an issue as a part of this. The next step would be the concept plan review. Um, the concept plan review is, uh, where it comes in and says, hey, this is the, an official of, hey, this is what we, this is what we want to do with this land. This is how we want to develop it. Um, staff, um, as well as outside, um, agencies, um, looks at this stuff. Um, we send it out to any other agency or anybody that's going to be involved in it. They look and we do a more thorough, um, review of what's, what's needing to occur. Um, assisting, you know, for like, for information, what, what utilities are there? What is the actual top, topography of what's going on there? Different easements and rights of ways that are there and on record. We provide all that information to the applicant. Um, most times, um, they should hopefully already have done their research and already have that information. But we just ensure that it matches, um, all the information that we have on file, that the county has on file for all of those different things. Um, from that locate, from that time, we provide them their comments. They make those corrections, those updates, those things like that. And then it's time for the preliminary plat's middle. Um, the applicant, um, will submit the preliminary plat with the required, um, checklist of items. Um, and we, we create a tracking number for that once we get that. It goes to a, uh, administrative review. Uh, the administrative review consists of essentially making sure that all the documentation, all of the, the paperwork, um, the plans are there, the different types of plans, everything that is there, um, is in place. Uh, we have 10 working days that we usually put on that. Um, most times with that, we complete that, um, way sooner than the 10 working days, but not all the time. Um, um, from there, uh, once we have everything that we need to do the reviews, we, um, it's entered in the system in the very beginning. But at this point, it then goes out to, um, actual appropriate reviewers. Um, in the PowerPoint here, I'm not going to list those, but those are, um, the main, um, stakeholders that do reviews. So, uh, we look at to make sure that all the regulations are, are, are being met. We send it to utility companies. If they have any input on what's being done there, um, uh, as well as, you know, A-, all the way down to A-dot, right? For different rights of way, because there's rights of way that sometimes aren't ours. They're actually A-dots. So they obviously in those cases have a say in what does and doesn't happen within those subdivisions. At that point, once all of agencies and departments and divisions have, um, done their review, all of those review comments are compiled and given to the applicant, um, as one, um, they're separate documents, but as one package, right? Um, this is something that, uh, we feel is super important to do because it starts concluding the system and the process when you have one portion of a subdivision that gets their comments, they complete them, they turn that in. Now this doesn't match what we have before. So it's just better to be all in and all out so that everything matches and everything is all on the same page as far as that goes. Um, so at that point, once all the comments and everything have been addressed and everything is looking good, at that point, we go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, so again, we have to get that on the agenda. They meet once a month. So that sometimes causes some delays as well. Um, but at any rate, we get it in there, uh, to the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission. We give them the staff report of, hey, this is where we're at. This is what we're doing. This is what they've submitted. Um, then we move forward as far as from there. Depending upon what the recommendation is from the Planning and Zoning Commission, that then comes to, uh, the, um, city council, which you guys are all pretty aware of what we're presenting and what we're doing as far as that goes. Um, at that point, um, we head into the final plat. Um, well, I guess, so, so the code allows for, um, time extensions to where if, if they've not begun and done things within the timeframes that are required, um, essentially they have from the time that the, um, council approves, they have to have started substantial construction on the subdivision within one year. Um, and if for whatever reason they're not able to, they can come to us and ask for an extension. And if for whatever reason they're not able to, they can come to us and ask for an extension. We can, per the code, we can extend up to one additional year or whatever timeframe they ask for, whether it be, "Hey, we just need a 90-day extension on this so that we can get the project going." Depending upon what that is, we can grant, but we cannot exceed a two-year extension. So then we get into the final plat application and submittal. So basically, the client or the applicant will submit the final plat, again, with the required checklist item. The administrative review process occurs again at this point, making sure that we have everything that we need. The planning then routes this again out to everybody so that they can ensure, "Hey, we've got everything that we need." And kinda what this step is for, and it's something that we have started to implement because we want the subdivisions to move forward. So there may be things that are not 100% completed on the pre-plat, but we can note that, "Hey, we're on the final plat. This needs to be done and this needs to be completed." And that's something that we've kind of administratively put into effect here recently to try and get these moving along faster because most times, if it's not done and it's not complete on the plan, we're not taking it forward, right? So we're trying to take these things forward with the conditions or the caveats that, "Hey, when we get to the final plat stage and when you start turning in this stuff, this needs to be corrected and correct on the plans that are coming in." So in this case, the final plat goes out to all the same reviewers just to double check and ensure that everything has been taken care of on those, all the drainage calculations and everything comes into play and everything's done. And then we do our review and then from there, the final plat, we provide our comments to the applicant again and they make those updates and changes. And then, once all the comments are resolved and everything is good to go with it, we do our reviews, everything. I'm sorry, I'm talking ahead of my PowerPoint. And then it's at that point that it goes to council for the final action on that. Phil, help me out with this. This is at the point where we would do the assurance, yes, that's what it says. But the, that's when we present the final plat. Everything is good on it to council, as well as the assurance agreement is also presented to you guys as well. And then we usually, depending upon what council's decision is on that resolution, we either move forward or we go back to the drawing board to make you happy. So from there, depending upon what the insurance agreement is, there's some different avenues that the code allows us to go down when it comes to the assurance agreements on how that's all gonna come about and what's gonna happen with that. And they have, the applicant has their, they have options on what they're able to do and those are laid out. And then from there, they, once that's all in place, they start building their subdivision, right? And then that's when we start getting into the process of the early permits. It's when they start getting to the point of, "Hey, we've got all these things done." It's at that point, we can issue the early permit, the early permit agreement and everything else for them to start getting those permits a little bit earlier. But again, our hands are tied when it comes to that, so...
So real quick, Sean, with recording the final plat, so the plat can be recorded depending on the type of assurance. So I just wanna make sure that that gets pointed out. So there's some forms of assurance that will allow the plat to be recorded right away and there's others where you have to wait for a certain trigger for the plat to be recorded. I just wanted to mention that.
I think it says this as I move forward. Thanks, Phil. Are there any questions? So the overall, again, we talked about the timeframe. Again, like we said, this doesn't, this doesn't apply. Residential subdivisions doesn't apply to the ARS, however, our subdivision ordinance lays out that timeframe. The timeframe is 95 days. Now, again, remember that that's time in the city's hands of how long it takes the engineer that's been hired on the other side to do something and get it back to us, right? That's not included in that 95-day timeframe. So subdivisions can be pretty grueling. Sometimes they're super simple. Other times, there's lots and lots and lots of things that we have to look into on all sides of it. Any questions?
I have several. I know you're surprised by that.
Isn't it time for a break?
Sorry. So do you have like a printed standard operating procedures with flow charts or a checklist so that every employee, if they're new or whatever and they're working on these complicated processes, they know exactly where to go. If this happens, I need, this is my next step and I only have five days to do this and then I've gotta send it to this person?
So...
Is that laid out in print?
Yes and no. So as far as an actual official policy and procedure, that's set by the subdivision ordinance. Now, as far as what we have in-house is we have a workload spreadsheet that has all the different things that take place in a subdivision, right? So from this point, we need to do this from here, from here. So when a subdivision's assigned to one of the planners to go through and do, they go in and they put those dates in there, right? They put those dates that say, "Okay, by this date and time, we need to have this done or completed," right?
So you're saying basically a project schedule?
Correct. So essentially, there's a project schedule on that.
And I'll just point out, internally, there is a list that you just talked about that departments have gotten together and we have this big, huge list of all the steps so that staff knows, "Here's the process." So the answer is yes.
That's actually what this PowerPoint is.
I'm asking, cause I know we're talking about hiring new people and how do we keep track of all these steps and how is it? You know, does somebody know exactly where they're going and how much time they have to get there? So that was the first reason why I wanted to know that, if there's accountability, you know, to each person that gets assigned a step in this process. Now, we had talked about in one of the first meetings, there were some concerns because there are a lot of things that have to happen even after it finally gets through the review. A subdivision finally gets through the whole review process and now it has to go on a council agenda. And what are the timelines to get on that agenda and what is the expectation for the builder? And then once it gets approved, then there is this sort of limbo period for it to get from council approval to being recorded at the county. And there was frustration. It was almost like rubbing salt in a wound. It had taken so long to get here and now just for these administrative steps, we were taking, you know, over 30 days just to get them their piece of paper. So do we have specific timelines that we will have it recorded within five days of the council meeting or 10 days? I don't know what's reasonable, but I'm asking if we have set timelines and a clear process to getting it through the end zone so that they know.
The whole deal on the process is, so when the final plat is approved and it's to be recorded, right? That comes to us on Mylar, which is hard, you know, an actual harder than normal. It's like a plastic, right? So that comes to us. So we have to get signatures from the mayor, the me and the him, right? So it's the community development director or manager and then we have to get it from the city engineer, right? So once that's completed, then at that point, it goes to the city clerk's office and they send it over to the county to be recorded, right?
And if I may, cause I had a conversation with Annie, the city clerk, about this. Annie, what is the typical time period that we see from the time that the Mylars are signed, which are usually the next day, right after a council meeting, from the time that that happens to the time that they end up going to the recorder's office?
As soon as my office has a completed signed Mylar, we take it over to the recorder's office, same day. So as long as it's before 5:00 PM that I have all of those signatures, I take it over there. And a lot of times with those, there are, it's a two-part process. So we do just send some things to the county to be recorded, but when it comes to these Mylars and sometimes there's the assurance agreement that has to be recorded first and then that number, you know, or, you know, there's numbers that are associated, so one has to be recorded for the other to be recorded, we take those directly over there. There is not a delay in that.
So and keep in mind, this is something that we absolutely heard what was brought forth to us. So we've tried to really pay attention, right? Really tried to make this to where the process is because I will tell you absolutely, there was a time when I had no clue that something needed to come and we needed to sign it and it needed to go to and get recorded, right? So there was, I will take that again, right, in the rear end, but there were times that I just wasn't fully aware of what the full procedures were.
And we haven't circled back since that meeting to talk about this in peace.
No, absolutely. And so it was something that we discussed with staff in-house immediately to, "Hey, we need to get this taken care of." And again, I will flat out tell you, some of that was my issue, right? It's been corrected, though.
Can we put that in a policy or in this, what you guys are using to say, "Here are the dates"? Can that be included and say, "We will get the signatures within 48 hours of a council meeting and then get that sent to the clerk and then the clerk will have X amount of time, unless there's an assurance and it'll take this amount of time." But again, so that long-term, those are in writing in a policy or wherever it needs to go so that we never slide backwards.
And I think we've done that already.
Have we?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think...
You didn't speak into your microphone.
I was just telling him, I think we've already done that. I think the recording is already in that document I was referring to.
That's wonderful. Okay. Those were my biggest, you know, questions on this process is how do we, at the very end, make it as quick as possible? And the same, so how long until you put it on a council meeting? Is it the very next council meeting?
Sometimes it is. It's, all has to do with workload, right? And so if something comes in, right, we have to make sure everything's prepared and everything for it. But if we have the queue of all these projects, it takes us time to get to it, right? So stuff that we've been looking at and monitoring, because subdivisions, it seems like they come through a lot because they have lately, but most times, we don't see subdivisions coming through at this volume, right? So that's another thing where we don't see them come through at this volume. So it takes a little bit of time to like, to learn the, "Oh, shoot, this is supposed to be done," right? And I, and again, that's where we're making a lot of changes. We have this fine gentleman over here that's gonna get us squared away with a lot of that. He's already done wonders for the division as far as he's taking a lot of work from me. So it's, I think we have a lot to look forward to and I think we will see a lot of significant change as we move forward, so.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Can I add if I may? Sorry, counselor. I just wanna let you know, at the end of that process, as a courtesy to the developer that brought that concern forward, we are also having the county email them a copy so that they know that that process has been completed.
That's really nice. Thanks, Annie.
Just clarification, the 95 days, is that calendar days or is that working days?
Working days.
Yeah. There's like two things that we do that are not working days and I was trying to make sure that that was one of them. So that is working days.
Okay.
Anything else on that? Okay, last thing, electronic plant submittals.
We talked a little bit about this earlier, so, but do you wanna talk a little bit about how we do have electronic occurring now? I mean, just, it's through some sort of a file sharing service that the developers can use. Do you wanna just kinda talk about that?
Absolutely. So I don't know when it was, probably a year and a half to two-ish years ago when we kinda had started discussing this. We started looking at what we had now that we could start implementing some of this. So we moved forward, so essentially, every submittal that comes in, we've kind of been doing both for some. I would say all residential is done 100% electronically, essentially, and it's, you send it to us in an email. If it doesn't fit in the email, put it in a Dropbox with a link. Send it to, send us the link. We go in there, we pull it out and we do all that. Now, we're still working to get commercial stuff to 100% because there's a lot more pieces that come with the commercial side of things and it starts getting difficult and convoluted when we try to do that through email. But for the most part, we are requiring electronic submittals on every single thing that we do. So we're kind of doing it, but it's not 100% in place. But it's in place, but it's just, we haven't cut the, we haven't essentially cut the line to where it's like, "Yeah, we're not accepting anything paper." So it's where we've moved towards. We've been doing this for about a year and a half. We're finding lots of issues with it, but we're also fixing a lot of those issues and things. Phil could talk about this too. He's gonna say it's absolutely horrible and we don't need to do it anymore. No, I'm just kidding.
I would just note, at least on the, some of the infrastructure side, we're not gonna be able to get rid of paper just cause, at least at the tail end for ASBILs and stuff, as record keepers, we're required to hold records for 500 years of underground infrastructure. And we've gone back and forth with the state on, can this be electronic, can it not be? And in the end, they basically told us, "It should be, the best way of doing it is paper" and we use Mylar, cause that has the longest age. So while I think a lot of this is gonna change to electronic, there are still gonna be some items at the end that are gonna be tangible, hard copy plans, so.
I think really, what this item was, was considerably more. You know, you're looking at, you know, whole process and online submittals and all that and until we get a system implemented, and that's ultimately the goal. And I think we'll be seeing that in the very near future.
And will we see a process where the person that submitted the plans will get emails with updates that say, "Your plans are now in engineering and they're in P&amp;Z and there's 15 days here or 20 days there?"
So a part of, a part of what we're doing with that is, at that point, the majority of our communication with the applicant begins with email. So when we've received it or whatever, we are acknowledging, "Hey, we have received this." I can't, I can't sit here and tell you that every single time that's occurring.
But you manually?
Yes, it's manually. It's intentional. And it would be phenomenal for us to be able to have an automatic email sent and that's what we were looking for when, based upon your discussion that you had earlier and when, kinda got to the point to where it's like, "Well, this isn't exactly what we were expecting and told we were gonna be getting. It caused issues," right? So that is what, a lot of automation, right? A lot of automation, if that makes sense. To where it's taking that manual work from us to where it's just happening.
And they'll be able to go online and the systems I've seen and have seen in play, they'll be able to go online and actually see where in the process it is and who might be reviewing and what the timeframe might be for that. And a lot of times, there's, you're able to, you register an account, you get it set up and then you can get, you can communicate through that when you log on with the reviewer or if they have a question for you, kinda thing. So it's intended to be very interactive and it's, I think, gonna be a huge, huge time saver both for the development community and for our staff.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Okay.
And then it's gonna be very hard for anything to get lost.
Good.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Manager Miller or Mr. Rodriguez, any closing comments?
My only closing comment is, we were listening tonight and, and I know between Carl, myself and Sean, we were taking notes and so we do have some deliverables to come back to you at a later date. So I think I heard three months, so we'll be doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, I just want to say, thank, thank you for everyone for welcoming me on board. I'm looking forward to be able to do what I can to try to help smooth some of these processes up. And I think, I'm, I'm optimistic and encouraged that, you know, we've got some good, good practices in place, but there's some improvement that needs to be made. Our, our goals, our objectives are going to be to be able to streamline this and shorten these timeframes and, and get into a good working relationship with the stakeholders on the development community. So we're going to schedule some meetings with them and work collectively to be able to hopefully get things moving in a positive direction very soon.
Okay. Once again, thanks for everybody for being here. We appreciate all the time spent on this and we are adjourned.